Can we get started, Mr. Mayor Proton?
Well, hopefully, we're gonna get, we got Steve.
We have everybody except two.
Mayor and anybody know what the mayor's running later, what's going on?
I have not heard anything. I just texted him and haven't heard back.
So sad.
So yeah, I'd say Charlie, why don't you just get started with the gender review?
Okay, I just, all right, everybody, Steve, you're ready? Okay, all right, let's start work session. This is from Spring City Council and most, yeah. Yes, being recorded, so I guess by now it says, this is, um, it's January 20th, it's about 3:04 PM. We have members of council here, myself, Shelley Cop, Paul Step, Tony Hershey, Steve Davis, various staff members, mayor and this councilwoman, Russo is not here yet, I'm sure they'll both be here. First item is a gender review, the future, does anybody have any questions about or comments, anything on the agenda? Let's start there. Go ahead, Paul.
Meeting, unmeeting, hey, um, the current agenda for tonight is fine with me. I just had a question on the agenda planning. I will be gone February 17th and something of particular concern to me is the emergency evacuation plan. So as you're rolling through and deciding what to do on those upcoming weeks, if that could be moved to a time that I'm available, that'd be great. Until we are recording work sessions, which I don't think we're doing yet, so.
And my planning, I've already moved it because somebody needed that spot for something else, and I think we need more time anyway to. There's gonna be a little brief update today on it.
Great, thank you, Deborah.
I think that's the second meeting in February, Paula?
That is the second meeting in February, yes.
Both you and Ingrid will be gone in that meeting then, so just have five of us.
Who, who else will be going? Ingrid.
Ingrid's gone that meeting too, so we should, we talked about that last night a little bit, so Shelley.
I just had a question on the consent agenda, and I didn't really feel like I needed to pull it off, but on the big piece of equipment, the new crusher.
Sorry.
Landfill, is that, is that in the budget? I didn't see, is that already kind of budgeted? Is there enough in there? Are we dipping into reserves or what's the status on that?
I'm not sure, Steve, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, I can take that one, Shelley. It is in the budget, not the whole, you know, million dollar purchase price, but the payment itself is in the budget for 2022.
Okay, great. All right, thanks.
Okay, any other questions about any items on the agenda? Carl, on the public, the PIF item on item 16, are we gonna have some numbers by the time we approve that about what, you know, I don't know if you saw Matt Steckler or former councilmembers, emails on those, but do we have any numbers on who's getting what and how much and have a little more information than, I mean, I think, my guess is we're, we're gonna have you go ahead and continue to negotiate, but do we have numbers that we could, we could have so we make?
Yeah, I thought those were, actually, I thought that breakdown on kind of aggregate numbers was in the packet in the report.
I don't remember it, but I, I looked at several minutes ago, so.
Steve Shofflick will be on the line. I mean, I think the gross numbers of what's going where, how much to the city, how much for, for maintenance on an annual base, I mean, it's four million to the city, $50,000 a year in, in annual maintenance. And then I think Steve can answer some questions on where the, the other money potentially would go. I don't know. Recognizing it as a private improvement fee, not, I mean, it's done by private covenant. I don't know how deeply into who gets how much of that. You know, Shofflick is gonna want to talk about or that we really want to delve into frankly, so.
But I do think, like, he was told to be prepared to, that he might get those questions.
Yeah, and I, I had a brief conversation with Steve earlier today just to confirm that he was, you know, he wanted to confirm he was still on the agenda. Nothing had changed and, you know, and kind of what, you know, what to be prepared for. And I said, you know, council like short presentations and they like to ask a lot of questions. So be prepared for that.
Okay, all right. Shelley, do you have something else or just not taking your hand up? I don't think I have control over that like the mayor does, so. The only other thing that I'm, I'm gonna bring up, but I'll, I'll talk about it briefly now, but just so you're aware of it, is I had a conversation yesterday with Carl a little bit about charter amendments. Is there any consensus among those of us here, and there's two people not here, whether we have a discussion about elected versus not elected mayor and or other kind of a charter changes. Carl sent us a memo at the last meeting on that. And do we want to try to get those out on the main ballot? Does that, anybody have any feel for that? Shelley, go ahead.
Um, I can't remember all of the items, but my feeling is if they're not time critical and they're not really being brought to us by the public, things like the change to an elected mayor versus the way we do it now is in the charter. I just feel like we have so many other things going on, so much on the plate. My opinion is that that's not a high priority right now. I'm not really interested in pursuing those.
Any other thoughts?
Any other thoughts?
Okay, okay, I'll bring it up, I'll bring it up.
I still think it's worth a discussion. I mean, it was on an agenda with the idea that we'd move it. And I, I don't want it to just drop off this year, you know, so if we had at least an opportunity to spend half an hour on it, 15 minutes, that'd be great. And yes, I agree with Shelley, there is a lot that we have on our plate all the time, but this has come up a few times in the last six months, so it's worth a discussion.
Carl, what would be the deadline? I think you and I talked yesterday, did you figure that out? You muted.
Sorry, I'm gonna entirely, rely entirely on Ryan. Ryan, what, what's the deadline for us proofing ballots?
I would like to get them 60 days ahead of time. They go out, Yuakava go out 45 days ahead of time and the printer would like them as soon as possible, but for the county, she would like them to make the questions up 60 days ahead of time.
So essentially, the first meeting in March, we would need to make final decisions on any.
That's for the May ballot or the?
For the May ballot, yeah, that's for the May ballot, if we're gonna use that special election for that issue. Obviously, that's different for the fall election and I would actually say with the fall election, we're gonna want to be more like 90 days ahead of time because it's a, a unified ballot with everybody on it. And so it's just, there's a lot more moving pieces for the, the county clerk's office, so I'd, I'd prefer to have more time for them than less, just because getting that ballot dialed is harder for that election.
In, in that regard, with all that timing, because I'm trying to take into account what Shelley had mentioned about all the things on our plate. We are having a spring election next year, so it's just kind of throwing it back to Deborah a little bit of, you know, maybe we put that in that list of agenda items. And I'm saying we have that spring election because some city council people have to go out and get reelected. So there's some timeframe in there. I just don't want to drop the discussion off the planet completely.
Yeah, it is definitely not off the plan, like I track the stuff on the, like, very bottom of it, and we can put it back on whenever council wants us to.
Yeah, so really, I mean, keep in mind, we're, you know, we really have three elections potentially we're talking about relative to that issue. We have the special election on May 3rd, and that's the, the 60-day window we're talking about, needing to make a decision by the beginning of March. We have the November election, which, you know, is a, a unified ballot with everybody else going through the county clerk's office. And then we have spring, April of 2023, and so we would need to make those decisions by the first meeting in February of 23, essentially a year from now. So those are the three upcoming elections that you could, you know, you could make changes on. Recognizing if you're making a change to how elections are done, elected mayor, something like that, that would be, if it was on the spring 2023 ballot, it wouldn't, if it passed, it would not take effect until the spring 2025 election, so.
Wow.
Right, I know, it's amazing how things like, all of a sudden, like, the timeframes get really long, right? So anyway, and we can certainly have more discussion on that. I'll work with Deborah on planning a time to at least get 30 minutes on one of the upcoming work sessions to have a brief conversation.
If we're gonna have that conversation given, I know Ingrid's gone for a good chunk of, of February, Steve, I think you're going instead in February, if I remember our conversation. You're on the river and we're gonna do it early February, very honestly, so it's not that far away if we're gonna do this and have all seven of us available. Steve, what are you, go ahead?
Can't hear you, Steve.
Can't hear you, Steve. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gone most of the month of February. I'm afraid I'll probably miss both meetings because we are in the Grand Canyon and, and that's a 25-night float.
There's no zooms?
I, I cannot get that satellite connection. It's like.
Four of you will be very powerful on February 17th.
Does anybody else get the echoes? I don't know, Deborah, can you check on that?
Yeah, I think Deborah is working on it. It actually might be Deborah's setup. She has to work off of her desktop as well as her iPad, I think, to make things work.
Okay, all right. All right, well, let's go, anything outside of gender reviews? Oh, go ahead, Tony, just on your hand, but.
I'm going to the Grand Canyon with Steve. He doesn't know that. Now, I'll be here, so those meetings are February 3rd and the 17th?
Yes.
I will be there.
But, thank you. Thanks.
All right, anything else on agenda items that you talk about? If not, let's go to building codes, Deborah's gonna handle that. Ah, Jen popped up. I assume she's gonna handle it.
Good afternoon, could we move, could we bring Victor Braz over?
He should be coming over now.
Deborah, can you do that? There we go, thanks.
Alyssa controls all things magically behind the scenes.
All right, good afternoon, wanted to just go briefly through this presentation. We may also want to keep an eye on the other panelists, Alyssa, if you can, to see if the fire marshal also isn't, I think he has it on his calendar to be here as well. So we'll just go through this really quickly and then I think if you guys haven't met Victor, he's our building official. And he's amazing, so some of this presentation will be from him and then hopefully from Greg Locke as well. So I know that there's been a lot of anticipation of this topic to talk about the 2021 building code adoption. Wanted to briefly go over why we do that, so the international building codes are revised and that's to keep people safe and to provide the best safety for first responders, first responders, and then also to minimize long-term costs. So we are currently on the 2015 building codes with the exception of the, we are on the 2009 energy code. And then we defer to the state on the electrical code because we don't do those inspections. And so I think that the state is generally on whatever the most current code is. So what are the big, what are those big changes between the 2015 code and the 2021 code? Blower door tests, automatic lighting requirements, EV charging, infrastructure requirements, the increased insulation requirements, and the mechanical systems commissioning. So we'll go through this and then if you have specific questions for Victor and hopefully for Greg, when he comes on, then you guys can ask those questions directly of the experts. We are proposing to adopt the tiny home and pool regulations, which we did not adopt the tiny home regulations when we did the last adoption. They're more formalized now, they were kind of like this, you know, addendum, and so we, we waited, and so we are planning to do the adoption of the tiny home regulations and then the pool regulations are kind of their own sections, so the same way that the fire code is its own section and mechanical code is its own section. Regarding energy improvements, you know, the federal register publishes some information about those, you know, what the energy savings are, so that information's there. Residential buildings are expected to have an additional savings per site, so there's a percentage there by site source and the energy cost savings. And then just a quick note that there were some requirements in the state legislature that when we adopt new codes that we have to come current with the energy code, so local jurisdictions have to adopt and enforce one of the three most recent versions of the energy code. There are some costs that are associated with that. We asked a local contractor to provide us some information about those increased insulation costs. So, and maybe this is the time that I'll will turn it over to Victor and he can talk a little bit about what we, what we did and who we, who we talked to.
Okay, good afternoon. Yes, we talked to Newman, you know, he offered some information about the insulation that was kind of, you know, the difference on the insulation is gonna be increasing. The R value from R38 to R60 for the, for the ceiling, and we have the 20 to the walls, 20 plus 13, I mean, 20 or 13 plus 5. The increasing, it's about, on the zip panel, are you looking at your screen? It's for the 716, R6.6, about 100 points each, and standard OAB is 2797 each. Any question on this slide?
Victor, Victor, sorry, it's Charlie. When you talk about 2797, am I missing, what's the size of that in square feet?
It's, well, that's a 4 by 8.
Okay.
Okay. The, the standard size of one of the panels.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to the next slide. It sounds like Alyssa, it sounds like Greg is on the attendee side. Are you able to, to bring Greg Locke over? Maybe we don't see him.
He's on the.
Greg, are you, are you just on via phone, not by computer?
He texted me that he was on the phone, but he was gonna get on a computer.
Well, he says his, his number is the 3799814 number. Perfect. Alrighty. That's perfect timing, Greg.
Hold on, Shelley, do you have a question before we move on?
Did, I had a quick question for Victor. Victor, do you know, um, because I, I know that's a direct comparison on the, the, like a 4 by 8 sheet of the zip panel system versus the sheathing, but that just goes on the outside of the building, the walls.
That's right.
What percentage of that, do we have any idea what percentage of that would be to like a total building cost? I mean, is it like 5%, 2%?
I don't have that, that percentage.
Okay.
It's gonna be used because of the thickness of the wall, so you won't increase the size of the lumber used on the size of the wall that you can increase it with that type of panel. Instead of buying, let's say you got a 2 by 4 or 2 by 6, instead of going to a 2 by 8, better you can use that one and it will increase more the, the price on the, on the lumber that you're gonna use on the wall.
Okay, so you get a trade-off, where you get a savings on the lumber?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Jen.
Okay, so increased cost for fire sprinklers, and one of the other things that we're suggesting that we change when we do this adoption, so we did the adoption last time. We excluded the requirement for one and two family homes to be fire sprinkled. And we are not suggesting that we have that exemption this time. We are suggesting that one and two family homes be sprinkled. So there is a cost for, for those sprinkler systems and, and Greg can probably talk a little bit about that. Just a quick few notes about fire sprinklers. They're designed specifically as life safety devices. Only those livable spaces need to be sprinkled, so Greg can talk a little bit more about what is excluded and, and what would be required to be, to be sprinkled in terms of that, those units. We do require an exterior alarm so that neighbors would be aware of a sprinkler activation was happening. And we already require fire sprinklers for single-family homes when the fire department access is in teptile code, so we do have single-family homes that are being sprinkled today. Additionally, you know, we, we recognize that there are some, you know, that there are costs to this, but we think that increasingly that, that life safety protection is really important as we, as we face climate change and we have some of these, you know, I think the fire in the front range is, you know, just a, something that kind of is eye-opening and we want to just pay attention to that, so again, it's, it's for life safety. It, you know, it's not intended to save the structure and, and Greg, I should probably turn it over to you.
Thanks, Jen, I appreciate it. I'm sorry, everybody, I was trying to get from a fire marshal's meeting where we were discussing this very thing with the county building officials, so pardon my tardiness. Yeah, Jen kind of summed it up with the, the scope of what home fire sprinklers can provide and what the benefits are. And as she said, and I'll reemphasize this, there's several homes that have been constructed in Glenwood Springs in the last five to 10 years that have had this requirement due to their difficult access features and also, you know, and, and add a cost to the homeowner, but when I was investigating this recently, I and determined what the cost of a fire sprinkler system is, I've really got to point out that it's minimal in the overall construction cost of a, of a new home. I'm happy to take any questions you might have and see if I can answer them for you. I won't give you a bad answer. I might give you an I don't know, but that means that I will follow it up and find out. So if there's any questions you have, please do ask.
Thanks, Greg. Paula, you're first. Tony, wait a minute, do you have a hand up present? Are you okay?
I'm okay, I'm okay, I just did lower it, sorry.
Thank you.
Great, what does minimal mean, Greg? Is that $100? Is that $1,000? Is that $10,000? I don't know what minimal means.
Well, it, I, the, the one contractor that does a lot of work in the county on this quoted me the price of $6 per square foot. So if a person was building a 3,000-square-foot home, that would equate out to $18,000, and that, I'm, I'm certain includes the design costs as well as the actual fixtures to put it in. Now, I, I didn't calculate this out, but I, I'm not certain what it costs to build a new home in, in the city of Glenwood Springs, but I'm estimating roughly $500,000. And that would increase the, the cost of the home, I recognize that. But I'm wondering if, if I had an $18,000 increase on my mortgage right now, if it would really make a huge difference in my mortgage payment.
And so Greg, do you know if by having these sprinkler systems, how's the insurance world working with that? Does that decrease insur, homeowners' insurance costs by having these sprinklers within their homes?
It does, but it, it does, but it's a case-by-case basis. It's one of the things that ISO, the insurance, oh my gosh. Insurance, yeah, ISO, they, they do review that. It, it's taken into into consideration along with a lot of other conditions. And that leads to the next obvious question, Paula, I hope you don't mind if I jump on this one.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna jump on this grenade. With our recent fire over in Boulder County, would home sprinklers had stopped that fire? My answer is yes and no. No, it wouldn't have stopped the initial startup of that fire. Startup of that fire, which doesn't look like it started within a home. But it, it did quickly spread to other homes. That spread may have been curtailed if those homes would have had in-home sprinkler systems. By virtue of the fact it would have knocked it down for that house and not continued that ember spread downwind. You know, it's kind of an academic conversation. But it, it stands to reason that if, if there had been a break in the action of the ember spread. Could have saved. Maybe not all thousand homes, but. Perhaps half of them at least. Depending on where the sprinkler system was.
And just from my understanding how these sprinklers work and. I'm trying to visualize it because I've had my smoke alarm go off before and I certainly wouldn't want water damage. If it was, yeah, so how does that work? At what point does the sprinkler kind of like jump in and turn on?
Okay, well, sure. If, if you're looking at any sprinkler and if, if you have time to ponder them like I have taken up over the last few years. You can realize that each individual sprinkler head activates independently. So I'm sitting here in my house right now. If a sprinkler head went off in this room. Or if, if the sprinkler system went off because there was a fire in this room, it would only activate the heads in this room. It wouldn't affect the rest of the house. Their, their heat activated and that heat has to be of a certain level that it'll only activate. If there's a fire there present.
Great, thank you. This, this provides a lot of clarity. Thank you.
Sure.
And.
Sorry, go ahead, Paula.
One other question, this, this is for Jen really. Jen, is this similar to what other towns? Greg just said he was talking to the county about it. Are, are all towns kind of having to kind of move in this direction? Is that what I'm understanding? I just want to make sure I understand.
I think that some jurisdictions have exempted this requirement. I, to my knowledge. Most of the jurisdictions have been exempting this requirement. Snowmass Village, I think, does require the, the sprinkler. And you know, as Greg said, we do when there's a need, when there's something specific. Related to the fire access where, where we will require it. So we could try to get some more information about what those other jurisdictions are doing on this particular matter. Oh, she's gone.
No, I'm here. I just have bad internet, so I keep turning off my video. Sorry.
Okay, no worries. I just saw you disappear, so.
But thank you.
And then Shelley, did you have a question on this? Or? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
You're done, Paula?
Yeah, thank you.
Question of cost, Paula, my understanding is that. Building costs in Glenwood and Steve might know this too, or like between three fifty and four hundred a square foot, so six dollars a square foot is. Less than two percent. But, um, for, you know, those, for new homes and things. My question too is, and maybe this is for Victor's. Would this apply to remodels of existing homes or is, would it only be new homes?
It will, it will only be new homes and in case you're doing a remodel, if you're doing a, a A D U, then you need to sprinkle that one. Okay?
Okay, but just the A D U and not the whole house?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Victor, follow up to that question. If I added, you know, eight hundred square feet to my house or a second floor with the new, the new portion of the house had to be sprinkled. Versus the old one or the entire house had to be or neither?
Only if you're gonna use it as a, as a radio, the, the only part you, you have to sprinkle will be the new one.
Okay.
Or if you say having the work where you're, you're converting part of the house to like a commercial thing, maybe like, I think it's when it's that change of use, right, Victor, that it, it kicks it in.
Okay, thanks, Jen. Steve, Davis?
Uh, the only point I was gonna make is. Unfortunately, dollars a foot. Is, is really not the whole story here because the existing water lines to the house. Typically are three quarter inch or one inch lines and they're not sufficient for a. A sprinkler system, so. Yeah, maybe it costs eighteen thousand bucks to put in a sprinkler system in your construction. However, you might spend another ten thousand just getting a sufficient sized water line to the house, so. That's also part of that equation.
We. Go ahead, Victor.
Okay, that, well, like we're looking, we're saying it's gonna be only on new houses. And right now, all the, the, the one way apartment on the new lines are putting in, all the lines are one inch already. They're not putting any three quarters. It will be probably in case somebody demolish an old house and does a new one, then might increase a little bit more because of that line, but. Basically, all the new water line that are going in, they're, they're doing a one inch.
Right, but the one inch is not sufficient either, is it?
Yes, it is for a, for a house, it is.
Is it?
Yes.
Yes. And Mr. Davis, I understand your concern on that. Because in a commercial building, we have to have, usually it's a four inch line that goes into a commercial setting. And that really does drive up the cost. I can understand that. But Victor's right, a one inch line supplies adequate water for this, what's called an NFPA thirteen D system. And that's a one inch line, especially with the water pressure that we have in Glenwood Springs, is adequate water for that.
Well, that's great to hear. My experience and I've had some with. Installing sprinkler systems, they've all been in apartments or. You know, commercial buildings, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's a different.
Appreciate it. Anything else on where we are that I'm gonna, so the mayor joined, I'm gonna turn the gavel over to the mayor, so is there anything else? Hey, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're in charge.
All right, yes, sorry about that, folks. I had this in my calendar at three thirty, so I apologize. Thank you. Charlie for filling in. Yeah, I guess that I'll just repeat, Charlie, anything else?
So I wasn't quite done.
Oh, sorry. He turned it over to me. I thought we were just done. Go ahead, Jen.
I mean, I can be done.
No, 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 you're great.
Uh, so just to reiterate, we're proposing to keep the bulk of the exemptions that we created with the adoption of the twenty fifteen code, so there are various things that we make some tweaks to. That we have, that we're gonna carry over. The change. To that, that we are, the biggest change to that, that we are recommending is that new one and two families homes require the automatic sprinkler systems. And then permit fees for pools, mechanical employing plumbing permits would be based on valuation. We have had them as a flat fee in the past. And we, we would like to have those be based on evaluation. And so that's what's represented in the draft of the document that you have in your packet. We are also proposing to increase the reinspection fee to a hundred dollars because fifty dollars does not really move the needle when. And you have kind of folks who need to have reinspections kind of continually. Sometimes that happens on a bigger project and, you know. The guy, you know, Victor Peter says you have to fix it for this one and then they come back to the next unit and it still has that problem and they have to reinspect and so those fifty dollar fees are just really. They don't, they don't really, they don't have too much effect. So we are proposing to have that reinspection fee be a hundred dollars. And then I think. Counselor Cop had this question, what other communities are going to the twenty twenty one code? And maybe Victor can speak a little or Greg, since they spend time talking to the other building official and fire officials. And the other jurisdictions, but we understand that Snowmass Village, Peking County, Aspen, Assot, Carbondale and Garfield County are intending to go to the twenty one. And then just timeline for adoption, and we are going to the latest version of the code faster than we did at the last update. So we adopted the twenty fifteen in November of twenty seventeen. And we are recommending a ninety day delay in adoption after the second reading of the ordinance. And that's really to give contractors time to make the changes if they've been designing on the twenty fifteen. You know, if we give a ninety day adoption, it gives them time to convert. That's kind of what we did last time when we did the adoption. And certainly if, if a contractor is ready with plans on the twenty one, we, we're not gonna say no. And but we do like to give a little bit of time to, to have those contractors kind of make that adjustment, architects make those, that adjustment, et cetera. There are also some other changes, new processes, those lower door tests and mechanical commissioning requirements. That we think we want to give people a little bit of time to understand how they're gonna do that in their project. So that's why we're asking for a ninety day delay of adoption.
We got a couple.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Um, yeah, I have one question again, but I forgot to ask who we're there, Jen, and. You talked about the state law we can adopt. I think it was the last three years of the energy code versions. I was assuming you recommended we do the most recent one. Is, are there, are there significant differences between? The most recent one and the one before it? I don't know, we'd want to go back further than that. If you know.
And Victor may want to answer that. I do know that there are some things that were in the twenty eighteen code that. Are made better in this, this version is my understanding, but Victor may be able to speak to that a little bit better.
Yes, we, we tried to adopt the twenty twenty one, because twenty eighteen was a little bit more. Let's say stringent. And now that the ICC looked at it and they did clarify a little bit better on twenty one, so it's a little bit. More.
Okay. Thank you.
So, is it my turn?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, sorry. I, I have questions, you know, as you can see this slide that's up on the screen right now. Things like blower door tests, that's something that all the jurisdictions of Valley of us have been doing for. All six to eight years now. So that's something that a lot of the contractors are used to doing and it's actually very low cost. I don't know, Victor, if we have a multi-family dwelling, do you allow them just to have like? An example unit that they test or do they have to test every unit or how are you gonna handle that?
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna be a, a new construction, so they have to test the whole unit. I mean, if it's a multi, multi-family, they're gonna have to test each one of them to, so they can pass the inspection.
Okay. Cause I had heard some where, you know, if you had like a. Example unit within the facility and they're all the same, that they might allow. One to be tested, but I, that's your expertise area and how you want to handle it is great. But I know those tests are fairly low cost. Like, you know, a few hundred dollars. They're not, it's not a real high test. Automatic lighting is very standard. E V charging, especially a multi-family, we should, even if we don't adopt this code. That's just something that's coming, that it's smart for us to get built in anywhere. And I guess talk to Matt Langhorst, I think he'd be. Hopefully glad to see more even charging infrastructure for our municipal electric. And then the increased insulation requirements, again, those are things, especially with my history with working with Clear and over the past decade. Those have been requirements of Valley for a long time, so a lot of the Valley contractors are used to doing this. Mechanical systems commissioning is something that's essentially. Just going in and making sure that the mechanical systems that were installed are actually functioning the way they're supposed to. Because the systems are complicated nowadays and you don't want to have a system put in and then you walk away and it, and it never works properly. And before commissioning, that actually happened very often. So these are really basic things that are not super expensive add-ons. And I guess my concern is we've got some big projects in the pipe right now. And we have, by staying on the oh nine code for the last. Seven or eight years, we, we didn't go to the fifteen in twenty seventeen when we adopted. So we've been, we've been building kind of to substandard. Construction as far as energy efficiency and this is, we're gonna live with these buildings for fifty, sixty years in our community. And, you know, the homeowners pay the costs, we all pay the cost for the added. Energy use and inefficiency of those buildings. So I'm, I'm just hesitant to give it another ninety days and have some more. Projects and big projects come through, built to this. Twelve year old code that we're working to now. And so I'm wondering if there's a way we can handle that, either. Putting a hold on any building permits beyond single family or, or having this go into effect sooner. So I, I'm open to suggestions, but I'm, I'm really concerned about that and. And I'd like to see this go into effect as soon as possible, so. Welcome other commissioners or council members comments on that.
Thanks, Shelley. Ingrid?
So we're, we're having a dialogue about the. The kind of the, the micro level of implementing these standards. If we go a macro level, how does this impact? Our current water supply? If, if, what is the requirement if we put on, you know, say nine hundred more units? And all of them are sprinkled or, you know, considerably more on the system because of this requirement. Are we, do we have the capacity and our water P S I levels and stuff to provide for the sprinkler system on this? Are we, you know, are we forecasting far enough along and, and where, where's Matt with this?
Uh, I'll let Matt speak for himself. I mean, they have been, they have done a whole study and so they, they have very precise answers and they can give you all of that information. I will just say that we require sprinklers for anything that is over two, so if it's a dry block today, it has to be sprinkler.
And I recognize that this change, well, I think the insulation has insulating qualities and some of those other energy efficiencies have more of an impact on budgetary constraints and things like that at the, this micro level. And historically, I get it with the sprinkler systems, they've already been being implemented, but Matt, go ahead.
So the way the city looks at sprinkler systems is we look at the largest sprinkler system requirement within a zone. And that's usually a school. So if a school catches on fire, it's gonna require three hundred thousand gallons of water to put that thing out. That's what the sprinklers are gonna use over a duration of time. So that's how we determine sprinkler systems. Like if a house catches on fire. It's not really that big a deal. I think they're like seventeen gallons a minute or something like that. Two, three of them go off. It's really not that huge a deal. You know, if something else moved in. And like it was a three hundred year apartment complex, we'd have to reevaluate what the heaviest usage is, sprinkler usage is in that area. And once again, it'll be a school. You know, because that's not the whole, whole entire apartment complex isn't gonna catch on fire. It's gonna be one unit, it's gonna spread to two or three around it. The sprinklers are gonna control it by the time the fire department gets there. They're gonna put that thing out, most likely is what's gonna happen, so. We look at worst case scenario for fire volume storage associated with generally the worst case scenario building within that tank zone.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It totally answered my question. It kind of put it in big, big perspective, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Usually a school.
Victor, go ahead, man. You see your hand up.
Just to add a little bit on that, it's even, I mean, let's, let's say that, that the house wasn't sprinkled or the school. You know, the water department's gonna use more water than the sprinkler will use, so to, you know, to put the fire out. Okay, so.
Yeah, putting a fire out with a fire hydrant is less effective than a sprinkler system for sure.
That's right.
All right, any other questions, Jen? Paula, go ahead.
Jen, are, are you gonna, is there anything we should know on this tiny homes and the pools? I mean, is, is there anything special in there that we should be aware of in regards to this coating or is it pretty much follow along with just construction of anything else? I just see the tiny homes kind of popping up and I'm like, what are we referring to here?
I'm gonna kick that over to Victor.
There we go, thank you.
Okay, the tiny home will be the same, it will follow the same code as a, a normal home. Even for the egress windows, everything, it has to be followed by, you know, by the code. It's no exception for the, for the, because it's of a tiny home.
Okay, thank you. That, that was my question. I just keep noticing it and I wanted to know if that was something different. And I, again, I apologize, I'm having bad internet connections, so my video's not on, but I am here, so there we go.
Thanks, Paula. Any other questions? Jen, we don't the presentation. I did, I think I cut you short, I tried to cut you short a little bit earlier.
I just, I thought you might want to see everybody, so I took it down.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, go, go, that's great, but if you have more slides, throw it back up.
Nope, I'm, I'm, I'm good and we're happy to answer any questions. No, I'm I I'm I'm good and we're happy to answer any questions. We do anticipate that um the fastest that we can put this on um I think is the second meeting in February, um because there's some state requirements when you adopt by uh reference that you have to follow.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just because you weren't here is a discussion on whether what Shelley talked about, we want to delay the implementation of this or not. That'd be the only question I have, Jonathan, about when you came in, and so I don't want to pick up on that, so.
Thanks, I I wasn't part of that conversation. So if if Shelley wants to ask her question and then uh I think Ingrid came on a little bit late as well, but if you want to summarize uh maybe what that decision point is or for the later RIVs, that would be helpful.
Okay, and I just had that, the same question I raised about if we can accelerate um the adoption of the new codes, is there is there a limit to that? I guess that's a question for Carl maybe, or.
Okay, Carl's not on. That's fine.
Sorry about that. Now, I was just um I had was pacing in my office, uh, so I had to get back to my computer. What I do while you guys are talking about building codes. Um, I don't think there's a real issue with how fast you would implement it, other than it's just going to cause a lot of disruption potentially to uh, you know, some of your contracting community. And I think, you know, one of the things we talked about at the staff level that I think is really important to understand is that, you know, most large projects are being built to the twenty one anyway. Because that's how, you know, your system with CAD systems today, you you kind of set it up for one set of codes and you leave it that way as an architect. So I'm not overly concerned about that. So really what you're talking about is trying to capture um a few uh potentially a worst case scenario, capture a few single family residences or a few remodels uh by trying to accelerate that. And I frankly think the kind of um the the um ill will that you will create in the contractor community by trying to go too fast um probably really in my mind isn't worth it for the benefit on the backend, because I just don't think it's going to impact uh a lot of those other projects. And that's really from Victor's experience and looking at how plans are coming in and what they look like. Um, and what code they really seem to be building to comparatively. So I'll let Victor answer how many, I mean, I don't know how many, you know, new applications you think you're going to see in the next ninety days would be operating underneath the the whatever, Ron, the two thousand nines.
Yeah, and that's what I'm curious about is especially some of the larger apartment complexes we've seen coming in recently, and maybe Victor can speak to that. What what are they building to? What insulation levels and are they getting the air sealing? Because you can have insulation, if you don't have the air sealing button down tight, that's what the technology has shown in the last decade. It's just, it's not doing its job. So that's where the new codes and the things like blower door testing become really important.
Well, uh, on the two large project that we have right now, that off and uh Bill Ripley and the other one, what's this? Yeah, they're, uh, what I've been looking at, they've been sealing the, you know, the gaps and uh in between. They don't have a test, they're not doing a test, but you know, they're do sealing the, you know, the gaps and and the cell plates and everything.
Oh, good, good.
We do a visual. Yeah, we, I mean, we do a visual inspection on it.
And they're getting R sixty in the roofs and things?
No, not R sixty. They're doing the the old one, R thirty.
Yeah, see, so that's half of what's required.
Mm-hmm.
And as everybody knows who wears a hat in the winter, where does your heat go?
Use it to the top.
So Jen, do you need else from the council today?
Uh, I don't think so. Um, our intent is to have, and we have put a lot on the city city attorney's office. And because we do check all of those references to to it's um many, many pages. So uh I know that the city attorney's office is working as fast as they can. Um, when John Hoist and I did it before, I think John did nothing else for two weeks. Um, I don't know that we're giving Richard that luxury. So um we are trying to get this to you as fast as we can.
Yeah, we'll we'll make the next meeting. Um, you you know, I I have no doubt that we will, but um I the the cross referencing in a in a major coded option like this with the I codes is significant. And so we do try to actually run it through a couple of different people to make sure that we've got all the cross references correct. And we'll still miss one or two, just so you know, like it it's inevitable, but we try.
And I guess from my perspective, if there is going to be a really rush, a really not so much, really quick implementation, I would like that to come from council. My guess is at the next meeting then.
Yes.
Okay.
But the soonest we can have this on for first reading is the seventeenth in February, just because of the noticing piece, yeah.
Right, because we're adopting by reference, otherwise we would have to publish in full all of the codes, which I'm sure the Post Independent would love, but Victor's.
And I will say that we did publish last time all of the amendments and it was, it it was quite, we we um increased the paper size by quite a bit. There was a whole section that was just the legal.
Okay, so that would be in the evening, February seventeenth.
So some two, two or three, we might only have four council members at that meeting.
Uh, Paul, are you?
All are gone.
Paul, are you gone?
I am. Yes, I am gone.
Oh, that's right. So Paul is. And.
I want to point that out and maybe if somebody's really generated, maybe we bump that back to that first meeting in March, we have all seven of us there, so. Um, again, Jonathan, pick up things that we're discussing before you go on, so.
Yeah, the other question is that is um the first reading and certainly we can hold an additional public hearing on March third. There's nothing to say that we can't, but that keeps it in in queue. I mean, these are things that, you know, frankly, just need to get done. Um, so I think even if there's four of you, there's plenty of time to have additional discussion on on the March meeting if you need to.
Right, I I would prefer that if we could, unless it's really controversial and everybody wants to be here.
Well, this might be one of those examples where we're missing enough of council. I know like Aspen as kind of a a rote, just way of doing business, passes things on first reading that are hugely controversial, but then has the substantive conversation on the second reading. So I think in a situation like this, let's, you know, if it seems good enough, then let's just do that on first reading and have the substantive conversation for second reading if if that works for everybody.
Fine with me.
Okay. Thank you. Any uh anything else?
Well, the other thing was, is is there a few that we we have the sixty day waiting period or not? I mean, I'm I'm fine with the waiting period, I got to listening to Carl and and Victor had to say, but to show you, I just picking up on that issue. Shelley, do you feel we should not have that?
Is it sixty or ninety?
Ninety, I'm sorry.
Ninety.
Ninety.
I'd be I'd be much happier with sixty, but I'd be happier with thirty, but that might set off. You know, that might not give people enough time, but I feel like sixty is a is a lot of time. Especially with all the work that I know Victor has been doing on this for the last year and um, so I'd be more comfortable with that, but have has there, have you had much uh comment on this staff, Jen and Victor as far as um reservations?
Well, uh, if you want, if you give too little time to contractor, they're gonna be complaining a lot. Okay, so, I mean, the ninety days, I know it's a little bit uh long, but it's it's very basically the lead time to do something. There's there's uh people that does it, you know, there's CD they're doing it in a year, year and a half, even though it's time to jump from this, you know, from uh oh nine to eight, nine twenty-one.
And and I would say I think that my biggest concern is that it's going to have a differential impact, because I think the largest builders, it's easier for to make that quick change and they already have made that change for the most part, I think. I think it's going to impact um somebody who's doing a remodel, somebody who's doing, trying to do their own um home build, single family residence. I think those are the people you're going to differentially impact, because they just don't have the resources to switch and redo a complete set of CD drawings if they're pretty far down the road already. Um, so that's where, you know, they're not ready to submit, but they are, you know, at ninety percent plan sets, if you will. And so I I think that's where I would be more comfortable at ninety days, even, you know, because I think that's actually fairly quick. Just thinking about my own experience, building a couple of different houses for myself, right? I I could be pretty close now and then if I all of a sudden I have to change everything, that's tens of thousands for me to get the architect to shift everything. Whereas if you're building a hundred unit apartment building, it's a, you know, it's a rounding error.
Any other thoughts? I'm I'm okay with this staff recommendation. I understand what you're saying, Shelley, but I I I don't want to burn people and and have have to redo plans if they're already in the in the process. I do think that we should make a note, we're going to be adopting this, so people are planning ahead, and I'm sure Victor will do it as people come in his office, so.
Well, so uh if we're going to consider this on first reading and pass it on second reading, second meeting, I mean, the next meeting will be the first meeting of March, and we're talking about ninety day, are we talking about ninety days after that?
Ninety days after second reading, yeah.
Okay.
So effective date, whatever that would be.
So I'd say regardless of what we end up doing, whether it be sixty or ninety days, Victor, like let people know that this is a a a robust and positive uh trending discussion among council. So if it ends up being sixty days, you know, somebody coming to your office tomorrow, the end result is it it still is more like a ninety days, because it's not the first they're hearing about it.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, but I've already been talking to the contractors and letting them know, hit, you know, giving them a heads up, telling that it's it's coming, you know, and so they already are aware about it.
Okay.
Think about it and let us know when we bring it back on the seventeenth, whether you want it to be the sixty or the ninety days. That's kind of why we're trying to do work session, wait, and then, you know, more decisions later, so you have time to think. Except for when we don't, because I'm pushing it, but.
Ingrid, you had your hand up briefly. Did you get your question answered or comment?
It was, it, you know, well, I'm I am supportive of certainly, you know, creating consistency with surrounding communities and municipalities. I also am hesitant always that to make changes that will impose significant increase in costs to people. So that means that those who have been budgeting and planning accordingly for the last few months, when they go to pull a permit, they will have an increased cost um in order to retroactively accommodate these, you know, these new things. When I say retroactively, it will adjust their budget. But I I am a strong supporter of this and think that it's appropriate and timely, especially just in the distance that since we have last updated it. I put down my hand because Victor gave us the assurance that he's been telling people, and that was my concern. Um, but thank you, Victor. Thank you for the foresight there. Um, and thank you for good communication, because I think that helps people not be as surprised.
That that's what we're here for, you know, help the community, you know, get a safe uh building and and we'll keep doing it.
I'm I'm sorry. Partly because I came only, I just have one uh additional question. Is this only applying for new construction for one and two bedroom, uh one and two unit construction, single family and duplexes?
Yes, for the for the sprinkler, yes.
Yes.
That's correct. I mean, the rest of it is commercial, so it's sprinkled by the code, so.
So if if that's the case, I guess my other question is, how many single family and duplex building permits have we had in the city in the last year approximately? I'm not looking for.
I can look it up.
I guess my point is that we're not getting ten houses built a week, so this is not a huge, I mean, we're talking about maybe a couple of people that might be thinking about maybe pulling a permit at some point. I mean, the these are long term, like, things move a little slower here and and we just are not talking. It's not a wide scale community impact. It it's it's going to be for the two or three people that might be building the next or pulling a permit in the next quarter, which might be two or three people potentially.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it will also impact um new ADU construction. So if you were to convert a piece of your home home or build a an external ADU, it would require that um sprinkler system.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay, thank you. All right, that's that's all my questions. Um. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you very much, Victor, Jen, Greg.
You're welcome.
Um, we are running ten minutes ahead of time. We can either take a break or we can just roll in. It looks like there's a lot of people here for the interviews for the tourism board. We have six interviews. We only allocated ten minutes per interview, which is is pretty lean. Um, and a little bit of time to go over if we can, but uh I'd rather start them a little bit earlier and still try to maintain our our dinner break if possible. So if it's okay with everybody else, I will just ask, there is a request by uh Roger uh that Roger Smith that if we could get him and he's got a commitment, so if Roger's ready, I'll move him over. And we can do the interviews. Again, let's try to stick to ten minutes. So let's see, Roger, I'm moving you over. Should be joining us shortly. And while he's joining us, um Ryan, we have the uh, we have four seats. I'm saying your name so you can fact check me here. We have four seats, tourism, lodging, restaurant and retail, or I'm sorry, restaurant and residency. We have six applicants. And it seems like there's a lot of people who are potentially applying for several or could go the other way, so uh you're just going to have to tell us which ones are which. So Roger is applying for a lodging seat. So Roger.
Hey, Jonathan, before Roger starts, can you clarify who is term limited out so that the rest of the tourism? I mean, the rest of the city council knows who will be leaving, and I can tell you that if that helps.
That would be great, Paula. I do not know that.
Um, so it's Chrissy um with uh Colorado Ranch House. Sorry, I don't know Chrissy's last name. It slipped from my mind. Uh, thank you. Um, she's term limited out. Scott Dyer is term limited out and um uh Nancy Hurd with the hot, I mean, the adventure park is term limited out, so all three of those will be stepping down in February. And um Sharon Brady is, has another term possibility and she's one of the applicants.
Okay. Uh, is there a way that we could maybe get them a, I don't know if we do gift cards or or I don't want to make a big policy change where everybody getting off, you know, we have to do something spectacular, but at least a a note, a thank you note for for those folks would be probably awesome for their at least six years of service they've given.
I think we made that a policy thing.
Okay, good. I think that was because of you, Paula, so thank you for that. That wasn't my idea. I just, it was a good idea that I heard and apparently I heard from you. Um, okay, with that, uh Roger, if you're able to turn your camera on, that would be helpful.
Hi.
Hello.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I'll just do quick introductions uh behalf of everybody. Uh, I'm John Gottes, Mayor, Charlie Willman, Mayor Pro Tim, Ward two, no, Ward two, Ward three, uh Ingrid Wusso, Councillor from Ward two, Shelley Cop uh at large, City Council, Steve Davis, uh Ward four?
It's me.
Ward one and Paul Step Ward one or?
Four.
Thank you. Gosh, it probably doesn't matter a whole lot. Anyway, this is City Council. Um, thank you very much for applying for for being interested in this position. Um, we'll go around, we'll each take a question. I'll probably fill our ten minutes real quick. My first question, my only question will be, what interests you in this board?
Uh, just getting more involved with the community. Um, I've lived in Lemon now for nine years and this would be a great opportunity to get catching on a deep level.
Thanks. Go ahead, Charlie.
So Roger, um, I I, what do you see? I mean, we went through some really challenging times the last couple of years. What do you see going forward to be the biggest challenge to ensure that we continue to uh uh bring uh people, visitors into the community?
I'm honestly not too sure. I'd have to kind of get back to you on that one. I'm honestly not too sure. I'd have to kind of get back to you on that one.
Okay.
Other questions? Go ahead, Paul.
I think it's great that you want to be involved, Roger. I'm, I'm excited, especially with your representation for um the hotels that you're working for. Um, beyond that though, just kind of digging a little deeper, if, you know, if you jumped in and, and you've seen what we've done marketing wise here with the tourism board so far, um, is there anything that um you'd like to see um that we start um thinking about incorporating? And I'm not speaking about a specific, we need to do this kind of campaign, but um maybe from your viewpoint of managing hotels, um, there's, there might be a gap in there that might help us.
Another good question. I don't think I have a good answer for. Um, I'd have to research a little bit and get back to you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Other questions? Go ahead, Ingrid.
I think that so often um we come from one industry and then we, we look at it through that vein, which we absolutely want, you know, the lodging industry influence as, you know, part of your discussion and, and kind of what you bring. However, in the event that you're having to step aside from lodging and you're gonna have to make decisions or recommendations for the community as a whole, do you think that'll be a challenge for you to kind of separate those two?
No, I don't think so.
Can you tell me why? Um. Elaborate a little bit?
I, I'm invested in Glenwood. So whatever is better for the community, um, I will absolutely step behind. Um, just because this is what I do for a living. Um, ultimately, we're here for the greater good. Um, Glenwood is a beautiful little town that's rapidly expanding. I've been in the valley for 20 years. Um, so I've seen it grow and whatever I can do to help with that, I'll absolutely get behind.
Perfect. Thank you. Lovely answer.
Thank you.
Who else? Uh, I, I. Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Jonathan.
Nope, nope.
I was gonna say, give you an opportunity, uh, you know, um, what do you think we should know about you that would, tell us um, a little bit more about as far as why you should be a, you'd be a good member of the tourism board? Give you just a generic question, let you kind of run with it.
Um, a little more information about me. Um, I grew up in Australia. Um, been in the valley off and on for 20 years. Like I said, I've lived in Glenwood for nine years. Before that, I was up in Aspen. Married, I've got three kids. Um, very much committed to the area. So I'm raising my family here. I absolutely love where I live and I'm very passionate about the town.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, I guess I'll ask one. Roger, what do you think is the biggest opportunity that the tourism board or tour, maybe, maybe not even tourism board, but what do, what do you think is the biggest opportunity for the tourism industry in Glenwood Springs over the next five years?
I'm, I'm stumped again. I'm terribly sorry. I'd have to think about that. I don't want to just spit out an answer. I need to kind of think about this a little bit more.
Sure, sure. Understand. Appreciate the thoughtfulness. Um, any other questions? 10 minutes is a uh prescriptive end date, not a uh aspirational goal. So if there's no other uh questions, thank you very much, Roger. We really appreciate you applying. We appreciate the time you took today for the interview. Uh, appreciate the work you're doing at Hotel Denver.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, uh, next, um, excuse me, let's do, who do we have up here? Uh, I have just in order Sharon Brady. Sharon, looks like you're there you are. I think somebody got ahead of me and promoted you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I can't seem to start my video.
For me, Sharon is in the lower left-hand corner, right by the uh uh audio. There's a mute and a stop video, a start video on the bottom left. If you could just kind of touch your screen or just click on your screen, it'll pop up.
I will say though, Sharon, you're the only applicant today that I have a really good understanding of what you look like. Well, um, this is embarrassing. I hope this is a not indicative of my uh capabilities because it says Zoom is unable to detect a camera. Oops, sorry you guys.
No, no worry.
I'm so sorry.
You, we actually have a, a track record with you to be able to uh, uh, ju- make a, a further judgment. So anyway, Sharon, you knew who we are. Uh, we knew who you are. I think we did dispense of the introductions. Uh, thank you so much for your service this last three years on uh tourism. Thank you even more for willing to go for another three years. Uh, it's hugely important. I guess I will just start off with uh, maybe a little different for you. What have you enjoyed the first, uh, your first term on uh tourism? Uh, what progress have you been proud of and what are you looking forward to doing the next three years?
Um, I think so impressive is just the cohesiveness of uh what Lisa does, Heidi and the Chamber uh on all of the campaigns that they promote, uh, the resources that they hold um with media and um journalists, et cetera, really throughout the United States and the world. Uh, it's so impressive to see. Um, also, one of the things that uh just comes to mind, and I believe I put this on my application as well. Um, you know, last summer when we had the rock slides and um so much kind of dismal misinformation was out there about Glenwood Springs and, you know, don't bother coming here and um it was impacting our, our businesses in our city so dramatically. Um, I was able to witness via the meetings I attended, um, just how quickly, you know, Lisa, Heidi, the Chamber, the city all came together in this beautiful dance to redirect, re-target and re-message effectively exactly what was happening here and how people could come. And yes, there might be different routes and you might stay longer because now you can do this. It was so impressive how it all worked and, and it, it worked um i- in, in a brief amount of time, you know, slowly uh our businesses were coming back, slowly people were coming. Uh, slowly lodging was improving. So that's just one example of something I was involved in and really proud to see.
Thank you. Other questions? Go ahead, Charlie.
So Sharon, Charlie Willman, um, one of the questions I have for you, you having been around the community and you see a lot of things happening. We have these pockets of time. We're in one right now. I'll call them, I think, shoulder season. What can we, what can the tourism board do differently in the future to try to bring more people to the community in these, uh, you know, in the, in the winter? I mean, it's difficult. People travel and stuff like that. And I mean, do you see any, any difference in the, in the approach to tourism board and, and the advertising you take to try to start filling those gaps a little better?
Well, I certainly think that, you know, this time of year, as, you know, really a lot of the shoulder seasons, et cetera, when kids are in school, this is certainly a great time for empty nesters, um, that sort of thing. Um, also our proximity to not only sunlight mountain, but our other ski mountains, uh promoting hiking trails, snow, snowshoeing trails this time of year, et cetera. There is still so much to do, uh, even though it may not be, you know, wh- what we would normally think of as our tourist season in the summer, et cetera. But um just touting, um, you know, all that there is to do in the winter. I know we always say, you know, come for the winter, stay for the summer. But um it's, it's just an excellent opportunity to be here and really understand. It's not as crowded and, and that's a really big message we could push.
Paula.
Hi Sharon, thank you so much for um all you do for the community and being on this board. In some of um our other um commission members, they've also often talked about having more exchange with other boards and commissions. And if the tourism board should look at that, what boards and commissions that you know of would think would be helpful as far as kind of looking at that big picture when you are marketing Glenwood Springs?
What other boards would we maybe support and promote as well, in my understanding?
Not support and promote more have, say, have an annual meeting with, you know, would that be like the historical board?
Oh, I see.
Housing board, would that be transportation? What would help the tourism board kind of in that messaging and, and understanding other aspects of the city and um beyond um kind of the, the really focused look that we get with tourism, which is great because you guys do a great job, but I'm just interested in what you would think of something like that.
Okay, I, I understand. Thank you. Um, yeah, um, well, for one thing, I think, um, you know, my husband's on DDA, but um DDA, you know, with a lot of the different uh projects that they filter and support with, you know, the Sixth Street, with beautification, with different uh events and uh parking and different, um, really different projects all over town. I think that's really important for tourism and DDA to both have kind of a pulse on what's going on together. Um, you mentioned the Historical Society. I think, um, you know, that's an integral part of Glenwood, of course. And um, you know, I've heard uh around town, a lot of folks would think so, think it would be nice to have, you know, just as an example, um, maybe a Doc Holliday birthday where it's kind of, you know, people dress up and, and that sort of thing, but that would also feed into new events for um, for tourism to promote and that sort of thing. So yes, I think the Historical um society might be important too. Um, but then not necessarily a board. I don't think we have an event person anymore. But should we again have an event person? I think that's through Parks and Rec maybe. Um, you know, that's, that's something that we should meet with consistently in order to um tie in any of our marketing efforts so that we're really letting people know exactly all that Glenwood can be.
That, that's great. And, and another one you might consider is arts and council, you know, arts council and, you know, what they're doing. Just, I love this idea of kind of, you know, the interaction and if that's something that I can kind of send back to the tourism board through you, that'd be great.
That's a great idea, Paula. Thank you.
Uh, I saw Deborah's hand go up very briefly. I don't know if that was a fake out or?
I was gonna say, we just did get an events person on.
Oh, fantastic.
Very cool. Charlie, go ahead.
How are we doing on time?
Probably should be the last question.
Okay, and I just had a quick one. Thank you Sharon for being here and for serving on the board. It's wonderful. And I just had a question. It's from a small business perspective on the board. Is there anything you'd like to see uh the tourism, you know, as far as marketing or support for small businesses be done differently?
Um, not, not so much as specifically a business owner. Um, although it is part of what I'm hoping we can achieve moving forward with tourism and that is, you know, we, we have changed the name from tourism promotion to tourism management. And I, I think while that, some people may think that's semantics, I think it's important because really we are managing expectations, right, of our guests, managing different aspects. And one of them that I think is going to be really important moving forward for our locals, for our businesses, et cetera, is really respect for these different natural resources that we have and sharing them with the locals. I hear that a lot in my store. Um, you know, when locals are a little overwhelmed with maybe a tourist, part of the tourist season or such, you know, with COVID, so many people went outdoors. We need to really work to make sure that our messages are about sustainability for our natural resources, sharing these resources with our um locals and our guests as they come to our town and um managing expectations as things like COVID and natural disasters seem to keep happening, unfortunately.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you Sharon very much. Again, appreciation on uh three years you've served the um re-interviewing and uh, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. All right. Next, we have, let's see, Loretta. You're gonna be coming over here shortly.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Loretta. How you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Uh, I'll just do introductions real quick. Uh, Jonathan Gottes, uh, Mayor Charlie Willman, Mayor Pro Tim, we have Councillors Ingrid Wusso, Shalik Cop, Steve Davis and Paula Step here. Um, thank you very much for taking the time to apply. Thank you very much for taking the time to interview. And I'll just start off, I, I guess, uh, why are you interested in the Tourism Promotion Board?
Well, to tell you the truth, I've been interested in for a while, but we did have representation here at the Glenwood Hot Springs. So now that it's opened up, you know, I have been thinking about it. Um, I've been here at the Glenwood Hot Springs for almost 12 years. And um I feel really good about my contribution, you know, here with the company. Um, and I know that spreads out into the community, but I know that I could do more.
All right. Other questions? Chris, John?
Hey, Loretta, um, quite a, well, the question I asked one of the earlier uh applicants and that was, you know, what do you see to be the biggest challenge of the tourism board over the next three years? If you get appointed, you'd be in others for three years. What do you think the biggest challenge we have in promoting Glenwood over the next, that period of time?
Well, if anything, uh, if we've learned anything from the last two years, anything and everything can happen and we've uh been dealt with a lot here in our valley. Um, I really feel like we need to uh increase our ability to adapt to change rather quickly, um, and increase communication and work together more um from a business standpoint. And, you know, even um history is doing or the attractions or the businesses, um, as, as far as planning and getting people in here.
Do you see any challenges that we haven't already faced that we, we're gonna have over the next three years?
And I apologize, I'm on my phone. I had something happen and.
Did you get that?
Looks like. Yeah, froze up.
Oh, there you are. I'm sorry.
So I asked, my question was, do you see any challenges that we haven't faced and how do you see we're gonna deal with that?
I think the only way that, with that is together and communicating more. And I would echo, you know, what Sharon said, you know, Lisa did, Lisa and her team did a phenomenal job last year and they reacted or not reacted. They, you know, they jumped on board and, and uh changed the direction. I think we've all had that time where we just cringe because of a, a newscast that comes on and the first thing they say is don't go to the mountains. So anything that we can combat that, um, you know, as far as getting the message out, uh, it is just golden. I mean, it's not the first time that this has happened.
Paula.
Hi, Loretta. Thank you um for applying for this. Um, one of the things that I think has um really benefited um our community as far as tourism in the last year is the Rocky Mountain year. Um, and I believe it's helped with hotel rooms. There's some changes coming up next year that they'll have more extended stay. Um, but there also is, has been a little bit of an impact um in, in our communities. I mean, there's been benefits and, but there's been impacts in the sense that, you know, I understand that we're working things through with the um Rocky Mountain year as far as the idling and um lights at night and that type of stuff. And you talk about working together and collaborating and stuff. Do you, how would you handle something like that or how do you think? How would you handle something like that? Or how do you think the Tourism Board might engage to help with? Um, not necessarily that particular problem, but just kind of having an understanding of the whole community-wide impact of trying to bring in um, tourists and to enjoy our area and then what do our locals feel about it?
Mm-hmm. Well, I can tell you, I'm an advocate for, you know, responsible tourism. Um, I've been in this valley for almost 30 years and raised four kids and have six grandchildren that were born here. So it, it's certainly important to me to, you know, have a, a certain level of of, of uh, prestige or pristine and as far as the environment and and what the locals are doing. But sometimes I feel like the local, uh, other than the people that work in our industry, I don't think that they realize um, how important tourism is to our community or what we do in the community or what tourism does, you know, or how you know, what tourism can offer our community. Um, I'm certainly concerned with a lot of things that I see from, you know, certain we, we have a lot of, of people coming in. And um, it's a good thing and I believe that there's a balance. Um, one of the things I feel like we haven't really tapped on is we are a four-season town and um, I know somebody was mentioning that early. You know, people come in for the winter, they come and go for different things and then our summer just kind of blows up. And I would like to see, you know, more tourism sprinkled in. Um, and you know, target those people that want to come in when it's quieter. Um, but I, I just really feel like building on a relationship and you know, talking to our business owners and making sure that as uh, you know, tourism in general, that the hotels are talking, the attractions are talking. You know, the businesses downtown are talking and knowing that they're not alone in the situation.
Thank you. Um, that's great. And I love the way that you have talked about collaborating and working together.
Shirley.
Hi, Loretta. Thank you for applying also. And yeah, I appreciate your answer on the last one because I was downtown for lunch yesterday and it was pretty quiet down there, but it was certainly a beautiful day to be in the hot springs somewhere. So, um, and just to be in town. So I think there is a um, opportunity there. And so my question for you too was with your history of all the different tourism um, businesses, small and large within our city, how can, how can those uh, coordinate together and along with now our changed name that will be the Tourism Management Board, um, work together to kind of just improve the environment of, of town for everyone? You know, every, uh, I'm thinking of issues like parking or some of the overcrowded things in the summer. Do you have any ideas in that range of the way that everybody can work together to kind of improve on those situations?
Well, I feel like, I mean, that's a bigger picture thing. I mean, I could come up with a lot of ideas that would involve a lot of people. Um, but educating, educating, you know, our locals. I mean, I, I kind of figure a lot of us already know when the best time to come into town to go to dinner where we're not going to be impacted with the huge crowds, but we need to get that information out there. Um, and you know, also equally with our guests, you know, we do a lot of referral here at the Glenwood Hot Springs. Um, and it, anywhere from other hotels to restaurants where to shop. Um, and I can tell you, like, our repeat guests have, you know, their favorites. So um, I feel like just our staff here, we're ambassadors for Glenwood Hot Springs. And it's really uh, refreshing to me that they're so passionate about our town. And I just feel like, you know, again, just getting the communication out, educating our guests before they get here. And making sure that we're communicating, you know, with our locals.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Loretta. I really appreciate unless there's other, any quick final questions for Loretta? All right. Well, thank you very much. Again, thank you for applying. Thank you for interviewing. Uh, thank you for uh, working at the hot springs, being part of the community and uh, we'll, we'll get back to you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right. Thanks so much. All right. Next, excuse me, uh, next on the list is Brandon Cambron. Brandon, I'm going to promote you over. There you are. So you're looking down mute yourself the bottom left. There you go.
Can everyone hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry about that. Um, just uh, in a office right now, so it's a little loud. So just trying to, uh, perfect. So how's everyone doing? Thank you for having me.
Good, absolutely. Brandon, I'll just do quick introductions. Uh, uh, I've met you before, so you know me. Uh, we have uh, Mayor Pro Tem Charlie Willman, Councillor Ingrid Wusso, Shelley Cop, Tony Hershey, Steve Davis, and Paula Step. And uh, Brandon, real quick, uh, just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving the Tourism Promotion Board.
Well, my name's Brandon. Uh, I'm probably one of the younger candidates in the area of, for this, but I have uh, strive myself on really focusing on tourism for the last couple of years. Um, I've spent the last uh, three years traveling around the world and learning about hospitality. I love food, culture, and people. So those are the three things I love to travel for. I've lived in Mexico for the last year, working in Tulum, Playa del Carmen. Uh, prior to that, in Lake Tahoe, um, where I served on a few different boards out there. Opened up Hell's Kitchen for the Gordon Ramsay Group. And also, uh, I just love traveling, meeting people. And so uh, a bunch of countries last couple of years and I just would be very excited to join this because I feel like uh, it would be a great use of taking everything that I've learned from all over the world now and find it into a position that I feel like I'd be happy to go for.
Thanks. Other questions? Go, Charlie.
So Brandon, um, thank you for being here and applying and, and how long you been in the community? Just.
Just about seven months. So I, I am fairly new to this community, but I grew up in Grand Junction, um, on and off. So I've been back and forth from Kelp on New to Grand Junction. So I am familiar with the area, just a little more down valley. Um, but I love this area. It's beautiful. So.
So do you see, what challenges do you see the downtown community has uh, as far as serving the tourists uh, and or what are the challenges with the, the promotion of Glenwood over the next three years?
Well, I think the biggest issue is, and I think a lot of people have already touched bases on it, is for one, just the communication in the, the town. I'm fairly new here. But here I am listening on this meeting and I hear about snowshoeing and all these other activities that no one's told me about. No, I, and I have no idea about these things. And that's a big issue. If you ask me, like, I'm one person that sees a lot of people and how am I not able to sell these things or promote these areas? I've been here seven months and absolutely zero, um, besides like chamber um, emails and things like that. But a lot of people do not, I, I mean, they'll scan these things, uh, working in the community, especially being lightly staffed. Um, some of these restaurants. So one, just fine tuning that communication and really I think having a point of contact for the community and someone that's actively talking to restaurants, actively talking to hotels. Someone that's actually do a point of contact would be very beneficial uh, in my eyes because then they have someone they can text or relate to about what's going on. I've tried to do my best to get a few different emails between um, the community in general, just between the restaurant side of things. Because ideally, like, when I go out on my days off, there's no late night food right now. That's a huge issue for me. I'm a late night person. Why is there no late night food? If I need to be the person, you know, those are, but the communication is really key and it needs to be developed a little bit better because uh, that's just how we'll create better tourism in my eyes. I, I when a guest comes to me and they're upset that we're closing at nine, one, I'm focusing on labor. I have very expensive labor, but then there's no other restaurant past nine o'clock for these guests to come in. And that's just, that's challenging. Um, so better communication would help the hours between operations. And maybe, so yeah, just a point of contact. So I can elaborate it for a little while, but.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Other questions? Go ahead, Paula.
I'm always jumping in because I see a gap. Brandon, thank you for um, your interest in doing this. Um, interesting, kind of having your perspective as a new person in town. Um, just not meaning to elaborate too much further. Do you, um, when you say connecting and, and these ideas, do you feel like um, there's particular programs that you can bring to the Tourism Board to kind of enhance that communication?
Um, I do think there are ways that we could focus a little bit more on at least the social media side of things. I think that there are good connections there. But I think if we really just focused on that area, there might be a better communication tool um, between us all in that aspect. Um, other than that, besides that, I think it really just takes someone that's out in the community talking about these things. We pay for security, but uh, when I talked to the security guards, I asked them, where's the Pullman? I acted like a blind guest. They had no idea where the Pullman was. I was so lost at that point. I was like, wow, we're hiring these people, but there's no like, and that's, you know, when you go to places, you bail after, you usually have someone that's very informational based, you know, um, and so.
You're looking at like an ambassador kind of program, maybe that we add to the mix.
Maybe, yeah, I would say maybe so, something along those lines, but um.
Yes, I love new ideas. That's great. Yeah, thank you.
No, thank you. Hi, Shelley.
Hi, Brandon. Um, what do you see? So you brought up a couple of good ideas for opportunities. Do you see, um, just in the time that you've been here, are there specific challenges that you've noted?
Uh, the biggest challenge um, is one, no one knows, like, let's just say it's shoveling, for example. Uh, there's a very fine line on like what I need to shovel. And for one, I'm lightly staffed already. Uh, COVID, different things like that. I have a minimum crew. So to spend hours of my day when we had these big snow, it was me personally shoveling and like, you know, that's, and then there's this fine line of like, well, how far do I need to shovel for? What's my liability behind it? And I had asked some construction guy, like, how much does the city take care of these things? Um, and that right there, that's this two hours of my day to shovel on little things like that. It's uh, that's time I could have spent with a guest or different things like that. So um, I guess that would be a, a challenge is uh, learning those uh, kind of liabilities because we do want to protect the community as best as possible. And I had an ice skating rink on the uh, walkway between the Hotel Denver and the Pullman. So those little things, having, you know, resources and stuff like that. And just the peace of mind to know, all right, these are my liabilities. I have to figure out how to do this with my staffing. Um, if long-term wise, we could eventually figure out something more suitable for the restaurants. Because that right there, you'd make everyone happy in this little area because, you know, we were hiring someone for two, three hours. I was thinking about paying uh, the homeless shelter, some people out of my own pocket, just to like, get things going. But um, anyways, that's some thought process. I don't know if that fully answers the question.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful. Mm-hmm. Thanks.
And I'm, I could give a million examples if I think long enough, but I've been, I have a list of things that are all just like all over the place. I'm ready.
I, I actually got excited when you started mentioning ice skating rink downtown. Like, that's a great idea, but I, I don't think you meant it in a positive way, probably.
Well, I mean, actually, working in Tahoe, there was an ice skating rink in the middle of town. So I, I do think there are a lot of benefits to that if that is something that um, you know, we, it was an ice skating rink and then it would turn into a miniature golf course during the summertime. But uh, nice turnaround, something to look at it into, you know, because that would be kind of cool to see that there's a communal thing to do in the city or in the town square that, you know, people want to collaborate with. Um, I don't know how easy or how financially beneficial that would be at this point. I would need a, you know, but maybe that is something um, that there is to look into.
Or splash pad. So splash pad right across from Pullman would be awesome hypothetically. Just kidding. It's actually plum for uh, over there for a splash pad. So maybe some.
Yeah.
Other questions for Brandon? Tony, welcome back. Uh, do you have any questions for Brandon?
Yeah, Brandon, um, you know, as, I, I think it's exciting that someone just new here with a different perspective. It sounds like you have a few great ideas. Anything else like that you think would be helpful for this community to get, you know, tourists where they need to go to, to promote the community, whatever you think?
Yeah, so let's talk about food trucks in general. So Mama Agnes right now with the Mama's Progies. I, I love, uh, she's been such a nice person and uh, I've talked with her here and there. But I look at her operation right now and I'm like, man, she must be struggling right now. That, that has to be really hard. It's cold. She has this outdoor operation. And I do think that if we focused on maybe, let's just say during the summertime, we have this, this gap of no late night food. Maybe we just open up Seventh Street and we just do late night food trucks there from nine to 11. You know, something along those lines. So that way it stimulates and we could do that now, you know, uh, for her or things like that during the winter operations because at least it creates an outlet for them. It, it wouldn't be the most warming thing, uh, but it creates opportunities for her to make money a little bit. And I'm not just talking about Mama Agnes. I'm talking about any food truck though. And opening that up because that is where a lot of people congregate too, but uh, having resources for them to also generate other revenues, I think would be beneficial for the community. And it also creates the food and other aspects that we're missing.
I love that idea. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions for Brandon? Brandon, thank you very much. We appreciate, uh, you know, we appreciate you being in the community. We appreciate all the experience you bring to the Pullman and the restaurant industry. In general, I believe you're the only applicant for the restaurant-specific uh, seat. Uh, so that's helpful. As an uncontested election, uh, you know, you can't lose. So uh, thank you so much. Um, and we really appreciate the time you took. So.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you all for listening. Oh, one other thing, social media influencer. A nice social media influencer or influence that come in, that would be really beneficial. I have a few connections for them. Um, but I, I do think that is what the community kind of could use is someone that's coming out. They're going up to the Glenwood Caverns. They're, they're just showing you what it has to offer. People with a million plus followers. People love that. And that is where the younger generation is heading towards. It's all social media. So like finding ways that we can really bring that into it, I think would be really beneficial. And I'll leave off on that.
Charlie and I had an experience with a social media uh, group. Remember that the other couple of months ago, Charlie? So they did, they did come around and I, I know that Lisa uh, every once in a while hosts and, and is able to help uh, kind of guide around uh, and, and give them kind of the, the lay of the land when they come to Glenwood Springs. So, so it is happening. It's, you know, just not at the level that the Kardashians or Lady Gaga is. Yes, yes.
Fair enough.
All right. Thank you, Brandon. Great, uh, great suggestions. We, I, we should take notes and completely not attribute that to you so that we don't have to uh, pay you for all those great suggestions.
No worries.
All right. Thanks so much. All right. Next. We have sorry, I'm looking. It looks like, oh, Justine, Justine, uh, Smith.
There she is. China.
Yeah, I got her. I popped her over. I thought I did. Oh, there. Okay. Nice logo.
Can you hear me?
We can. Yeah.
Okay, let me see if I can get this. Yeah, the allow. For a long time, it was my camera wasn't coming up, but now it is. Hi.
Hello. How are you doing?
I'm well. How are you?
Good. I guess I take it for granted, you might know us all, but if you don't, John Goodus, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Charlie Willman, Councillor Wusso, Cowp, Stepp, and Davis, and Councillor Hershey.
Nice to meet and see all of you.
All right. Real quick, I guess, you know, start off with, thank you very much for applying and taking the time to interview today. Through your commitment. So kudos on that. And my first question, really, usually my only question is, why are you interested in this position? And I guess why, what also do you think you could bring to the position?
Yeah, sure. So I mean, I think we're probably all in it for, for the same reason, because we love it here. It's the community and the connections and how we can make a contribution. So I think that, you know, aside from, from loving Glenwood and wanting to be a bigger part of it, I think that in, in my new role, I want to know how Rocky Mountaineer can, can contribute, can, you know, help, I guess, you know, help manage tourism in Glenwood and be sort of a, an earpiece for, for us, but also what can, what can we bring? Obviously, that's the biggest part is how can, I mean, we got such a warm welcome from Glenwood and very much thanks to the Tourism Management Board and, and you know, we want to be a part of it and not just, it's got to be two way partnership, right?
Absolutely. Charlie, go ahead.
Thanks. I was the first question. Justine, nice to see you again. What, what do you see? The question I've asked others, and what do you see the biggest challenges over the next three years? I mean, we have the potential of closures, the canyon, which may or may not affect the railroad. It doesn't, it hasn't much after the initial problems, but what do you see the biggest challenges in bringing tourism to Glenwood throughout the year, including times when Rocky Mountaineer is not running?
Sure. I, I guess I'm not, I'm not totally sure. I think that we could I, you know, obviously we are a bit large consumers of lodging and I think that that has been one challenge. Certainly during, during peak seasons, but obviously, you know, just so it's, so it's quantity and also quality. I think that that is a challenge for Glenwood. I think that I like, obviously, a small town growing is always going to have its own sort of set of quirks and challenges that, that that the community needs to, you know, work together to, to figure out what in particular do I, do I think that we will see? I don't, I don't honestly have a good answer for that. I don't know what, what's around the corner. How could we have known what some of those recent challenges have been? But, but the, you know, this community, the greater Roaring Fork Valley, I think, and, and in general, you know, everyone has, has rallied to, to get past them. So we, we keep at it, whatever, whatever comes next.
Thank you. Paula. Sorry, we just got in order by now.
Didn't even raise my hand. You were just waiting for me to do that. That's great. Um, so Justine, welcome. Thank you very much for applying for this. And we'd appreciate your insight on this. You had mentioned coming in not as Justine, but coming in as a representative Rocky Mountaineer. And I just want to understand how you can kind of separate what's best for Glenwood.
No, it's not for Rocky Mountaineers. So, no, me, me first for sure. But the, but the window of opportunity comes by way of my role. So I absolutely, I am a committed resident of this town. I am a parent of young children. I'm a homeowner and a big hockey fan. We can go back to the ice rink idea. They're like, I'm the eight U Grizzly Director. I'm the Mountain Select Executive Director. I've I've got my hand in a lot of pots. And I think, and so, yes, so that's, that's my sort of doorway, I guess, into qualifying as beyond the resident, you know, sort of circumstance, but I, I'm, I'm doing this because I want to and not under any direction I, but I also want, so I was really excited when I saw that Rocky Mountaineer was coming here. I was already familiar with the brand. I have a background in promoting luxury products. I thought it was a great fit. My criteria when we were relocating, having already lived here once before, so like was sort of hard to beat, but my mountains, river, ice rink, functional train station. So now I feel like all of those pieces have, have, you know, not just are in the place that I live, but I'm actively involved in all of them. I feel really grateful that I have a job I love so much. But as previously mentioned, we obviously have had some challenges already. I want to be a part of getting past that and helping, you know, our community love a product that I'm really behind and also that product getting behind our community. Like I just, I just think it's I'm, I hope I can be a really useful piece because I love Glenwood and because I love Rocky Mountaineer.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Shelley.
Hi, Justine. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good, good. I, I love the concept of bringing guests to our town via train. And so I've been really excited about the Rocky Mountaineer, but as you pointed out, there, there, there've been a little bit of you know, issues and in general, you know, tourism will affect the community. And we, yet we know how important it is and we are a resort community. So how, do you have any insights or how do you think the Tourism Management Board can work on just everybody partnering together between the businesses and the, the community and, and to, to make it all work well together?
Well, I think, I think it's already happening quite, quite a bit. I do, I, I think that, you know, Visit Glenwood does a great job of highlighting all of the things that are on offer in our community. I think that we are so fortunate to live in a place that has so much to offer. And I, I do think it is well highlighted. And I do think that, you know, businesses are working together to support each other and and also just like come up with collaborations that are unique and different and appealing. We just spent some time last week, my onboard team was here selecting local products to have onboard the train. And, you know, wherever we went, they're like, oh yeah, like it was not a competition. They'd all, you know, they all worked together and we're creating things together and we're promoting each other. And I think that that's, I mean, it, it does work and it is working and subject like even what what the, the last gen Brandon was just saying about having a place to refer guests when, you know, they are closing, you know, having that, just that constant sort of knowledge of, of what's here and, and being able to pass that forward. I think, I think it is happening. And I think, I think we'll continue to, to just see that do more for, for local businesses and the community.
Great, great. That's great to hear.
Possibly Ingrid or Councillor Hershey? Go ahead, Tony.
Is there anything you see like when you're talking to these guests who arrived here by train or whatever, either complaints or compliments that we could either fix or build on? Is there something like that they feel that Glenwood's not offering or the reason they want to come here? Or that they're excited about that we could further promote? I always think of like Aspen and, you know, the ski company and that's it. It's skiing, but there's just so many other things in Aspen and here to do. Do you have any ideas about that?
Well, there aren't any complaints. I know, I honestly, and I think, and I think you've probably all heard this somewhere. But it is 100% true that our guests just want to spend more time in Glenwood and the comments that we are getting are like, why, why don't we? How can we? We've had guests who have gotten to their end point and then turned around and come straight back. Glenwood is, is a highlight on this trip that I don't think our Canadian counterpart, counterparts realized when they planned it. And, and fortunately, all the feedback has been fabulous.
Great. Yeah, I like to hear that. Thank you. I did see that TV show about the Rock Mountaineer in Canada. That looked like a cool trip too, though. Thank you.
No, I don't have any questions for Justine. I do know Justine. Hello. Thank you so much for applying. And I will say that it's so nice on this Tourism Promotion or this Tourism Management Board to see a new diverse voice. Because we've not yet had, you know, you, we do a lot of times have it from the lodging or restaurant industry and, and absolutely valuable voices that they bring. But I'm really grateful that you are, are bringing this alternative perspective as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Justine, thank you very much. Again, thank you for applying. Thank you for taking the time. Really glad that you're not at First Bank anymore. Now you're at Rocky. Not, not the first, you shouldn't be at First Bank. We love you in this position. So thank you. It's a great partnership. And yeah, we'll, we'll get back to you. Thank you so much. All right. Let's see. Let me bring up my agenda here. Sorry, guys. Who's next? So somebody else told me out here.
We're going break for dinner.
Is that it? Did we do all our interviews?
I want to point break for dinner to the.
Pam, Pam McMillan?
She's not available tonight.
Okay, I didn't hear that. Didn't catch that.
Okay.
Yes, Pam McMillan.
This is a break for dinner? Okay, we'll come back here 15. Thank you all.